I don't really think we need them and that was ten years ago. And it's like.
Oh, it's a good thing for sure.
That's kind of short for a. I could have made it. I could have made it about five hundred pages if I would include all of the. Responses, I could put all four of those in there. It's like there's just. It's like too, sometimes just too much information. I've been guilty.
Sure, before consent agenda? Right after, sure.
Thanks for all your good minutes too that you put in there.
I have a hard time.
Now, do you have a little recorder? How do you remember all this?
I kind of use glasses, but I can't wear glasses with.
It's hard.
How many do you do?
I, I, I have to find the right spot of getting this pinched down. And then putting my glasses like right over it.
And it works.
And generally the, the, you know, it'll be okay. But like when the humidity and thing starts to pick up, it gets tougher. And when I'm driving the ambulance, I have to turn the fan on and actually have it directed so that it keeps airflow and pass my eyes. But by the time I get done with a transport, particularly a long one, then my eyes are all. It's like, I don't know which is worse.
There is.
Yeah, right.
And especially now that we're muffled.
Too hard.
Yep.
Got an email from the airport. I'm at the airport, it's a little busy to do the request for.
Yeah, there's times I was trying to get that right and you're coming along and your glasses are starting to fog and you know that when you stop breathing, then it will clear up very quick.
Yeah, right.
So I sit in the corner with my breath, so I get around the corner here and try to get everything adjusted again to make it work. Only one time I just, I just plain had to tell them that, like, look, I'm pulling over a second, I gotta get my, I gotta get my vision thing squared away here.
Yeah.
For all of our sake.
Oh, sorry, close.
Okay.
You can make it work from the shore and you're not the typical sail. Versus the other ones about her. No matter what, right?
If I just keep going down this road.
We get a lot of smoke from the sawbill.
I'll make a few more returns. No matter what.
I mean Greenwood, obviously, everybody's getting mad, but I've been. We can tell when it's coming.
Morning Molly.
Good morning.
It's on your post.
Okay.
That's a lot to manage, isn't it?
Up this morning and look how I was.
Ready, sir.
As ready as we're ever gonna be.
Yes. Good morning, I'd like to call the meeting of the Cook County Board of Commissioners to order on this Tuesday, August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one at, uh, let's see, eight thirty-four AM. Please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to make, uh, an adjustment to the agenda, adding, uh, an update from emergency management with my Keyport, uh, just after the consent agenda, that'll be, um, item four, and then we'll bump everything down from there. And so I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Starlee, we have a second.
Sullivan, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion passes. Uh, we have our agenda, onto item two, public comment period. Anyone from the public who would like to, um, give comment at this point out in the audience? Morning.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one really cool comment. A cool story to share.
Well, Mary, and Mary, we know you, but could you say your name and, yeah?
I am Mary Somnus. Uh, so last week I attended a milestone event. One Roof hosted a community land trust gathering for the homeowners at Nordic Star. And five of the ten households were able to attend. We were visiting on the plaza at North House and enjoying wood-fired pizza. It was a, a really beautiful, you know, summer evening on the harbor. And I observed those neighbors and friends really, really happy, really happy, uh, neighborhood. And I heard that there's twelve kids who live there. And six of them ride the school bus every day, how cool is that? I think, um, One Roof taught us this is hard, but we can do it. And I just want to think a moment to shout out to Jeff and Julie and the rest at One Roof and thank them for the, for the homes that they brought to us there. And thank you and to the community for your support of the creation of the HRA. Because pretty soon there'll be more stories like this that we can tell and share together. And that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Mary. Any other, um, public comments from, from the crowd? We don't have a crowd really, but. Or, or written comments submitted? All right, then I'd close the public comment period and moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that Commissioner would like to pull from the consent agenda? Or, or auditors for that matter, outer power.
Mr. Chair, not to pull, just, um, I know this was a question yesterday at the leadership meeting. And that just confirmed that the, the donation, um, is it for K nine? That's what the account number stands for.
Okay.
So the sheriff donation is for the purpose of supporting the K nine programs.
Item, item three J is what we're referring to for, for Gary. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Uh, so hearing nothing to pull, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I would a move to approve the consent agenda as a whole.
Thank you, Commissioner Swalson, do we have support?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins, we have support, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion approved unanimously. Uh, Mr. Keyport. We know your, your time is very full, thank you for joining us this morning.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, uh, community members. Yeah, just a quick update for you. As you know, the Forest Service, uh, has been managing this incident since the onset. Late last week, they made the decision to request an, uh, what's called an IMT, which stands for Incident Management Team. What that is, is a team of highly trained professionals that come up here and, and just like the name sounds, they manage the incident. For the Forest Service, that does not mean the Forest Service walks away from it, they're, they're, they're still very much involved. The Incident Management Team arrived on Sunday. Sheriff Eliason and myself were invited to the initial briefing. Where we met the team and exchanged contact information and such. The team took over on Monday morning at six AM and they've been managing the incident since. Within that team, there's a liaison officer and it's that person's job to liaison with the, with the folks not involved directly, such as Sheriff Eliason, myself and the Forest Service. So we've been, uh, the sheriff and I have been very involved with this liaison officer. On Monday afternoon, around five o'clock, Sheriff Eliason got a call that the fire had taken a little turn towards the worst, kind of heading towards the end of the Gunflint Trail. After discussion, it was made the decision not to evacuate, however, to do a, what, what we're calling a pre-evacuation. So the Gunflint Fire Department, along with some sheriff's deputies, uh, went up to the end of the Gunflint Trail, down to the Loon Lake area and notified every resident and camper that was up there to be prepared, uh, should the evacuation order come. So to repeat, it's not an evacuation order at this time, but. To go on with that, as we, if we need to evacuate folks, uh, then we, as a, as a county, we have to provide a shelter for them. Our designated shelter is the YMCA here in Grand Marais. I, I met with Emily Marshall last evening and of course, she, her and her staff are very willing to assist us. To go along with that, I have a call into the, I, I spoke with the American Red Cross last night, uh, they will come up to assist us when that time comes, should, should we need the assistance, which we will. And they, and they'll walk us through that process. Part of, part of that shelter process also is, uh, we, we like to know if people are out of the area. So what's been done in the past is we've had people go to the Y, whether they need sheltering or not, and just check in and say, this is Joe Smith, I left, uh, seventeen Gunflint Trail, I'm going to my sister's house, I, I won't be back until it's safe, type of thing. With technology, I, I think, you know, instead of people having to physically stop, I'm hoping to put out a media release today that they can email or call me with that information for just a quicker transaction and, and it frees up Emily's staff over there or, or somebody from the county having to be at the desk at the, at the YMCA. So I'll, I'll, I'll make sure I get that media release out. Also in the media release will be a, kind of a frequently asked questions as to evacuations, where do I go, what do I bring, uh, pets, uh, all the different things, but that'll all be included. Our, our local media outlets do a good job of pushing that stuff out for us, so, so that'll be forthcoming. Just, uh, just to the community members, uh, of course, I'm a, I'm a one man office and, um, I'm, uh, doing my very best to field the emails and phone calls. I will get back to you, you know, just be, be patient, I'll, I'll, I'll get back to you. Lastly, for you folks, as if and as we start using county resources, such as sheriff's deputy overtime and different things, in order to get, um, reimbursed for any costs that the county incurs, we will need to do an emergency declaration for this incident. So I'll have that prepared and ready to go, so if we need it, it, it's right there, or if we, if you folks need to call an emergency meeting to get it processed, that's, that's what we'll just need to do, so. That's my report this morning, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Keyport, any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Swalson?
Mr. Keyport, we are at a, is that a Incident Management Team, is that a Level Three right now?
It's a, it's, it is, yes.
And where are they located?
They're located, the Incident Command Post, Post is on the Gunflint Trail at Hall Three.
Hall Three.
Presently, now, if, if an evacuation corridor comes through that, that, that Incident Management Post could, could change too, it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of an odd situation. The, the fire is actually in the Tafti District, but we placed the Incident Command Post there because it's actually closest to the fire.
Yeah, okay. And are there any other outside resources we need right now?
We need? Not at the county level, no. The only other thing that I have, uh, that I have, uh, in, kind of on hold for me is we have a regional resource, we have a pet shelter trailer located in Duluth. And I have, I have a gentleman willing to bring that right up to us should we need it, has all the supplies, pet carriers and, and different things for sheltering pets. So that's a resource that I have on, on standby also.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Commissioners or Minister Yorkie?
Yeah, and Mike, that, that pet trailer, that also has, uh, supplies for large animals, for example, if people had to evacuate horses?
Not, it's not designed for, for like farm animals, if you will, so.
So.
That's something I would recommend, I mean, I could maybe find a resource, but I would certainly recommend for folks that have livestock type animals to, to start planning ahead to see if they can find a resource, a trailer, or something that they would need to move that type of animal.
Okay. So, and as far as the food for, for large animals, like alfalfa bales and stuff like that, would the, would the owners be responsible for providing that then?
They, they would be unless we can find a resource, if we can find somebody, you know, if, if it's at that point where we file an emergency declaration where we would maybe be reimbursed for that type of thing, or, you know, Lake County filed a emergency declaration very early on because they had, they had property loss almost immediately, so.
Okay. But those large animals then would go to the equestrian facility there by the recycling center, is that correct?
I, I, I'm not sure of that, James.
Okay. Okay.
I can, I can certainly look into that to see if we have anything in our plan that I'm unaware of.
My, my understanding is that that facility was created in part with FEMA dollars? Does anyone have a recollection of that?
Yeah, from, from the last fire.
And I think the idea there was that if people needed to bring.
Okay.
Horses and other large animals there, they could, so.
All right, good information.
Right.
Any other questions? Commissioner Sullivan?
I'd just like to thank you all for your diligence and hard work, um, you're doing a great job of reaching out to the community and getting them ready and so on behalf of our visitors and our residents, thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to echo that, um, I called Mike over the weekend and again yesterday evening, and times like this, this is not a Monday through Friday, eight to five job, it becomes twenty-four seven, so Mike, I really appreciate your dedication and service.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Keyport. That moves us down, uh, to item five now in the Sheriff's Department, uh, five A will be a grant to cover EMD training. Good morning.
Gary Fagerman with Sheriff's Office, um, the first grant is to cover emergency medical dispatch training, it was a five-week course that, uh, three staff took and that covers the entire cost of the, of the training that has been completed and everybody's done and certified now, so.
Great, any questions, uh, from Mr. Fagerman?
Is that, is that a yearly training that needs to be done?
No, it, it, there is a recertification, but this, the big one is, is a one-time deal.
Oh, oh.
Recertification, I believe, is every two years, but that's, that's a, not a significant of a cost, so.
All right, without any further questions, I entertain a motion. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to approve the grant for EMD training.
Swalson, second.
Thank you, we have a motion in support, uh, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And then item five B is the nine-one-one grant for the nine-one-one system.
Yeah, unfortunately, when my haste to get, to get here in time, I, I don't think I printed the right paperwork, so. This is the, this is the grant and, uh, Mr. Powers is somewhat familiar with it because I know we've talked about it, um, to cover the new nine-one-one system, the nine-one-one phone system, um, our old system was just simply failing and needed, needs, needed to be replaced, so, um, that's, uh, just about finalized as far as the work goes, there's a few little bugs that we're working out yet with, with Central Square.
Any questions on that grant? Uh, Commissioner Hawkins, yes, please.
Yeah, so I, actually, this might be more for Brady, when the phone system was updated, wasn't that on the equipment bond list? Was equip, was bond money used to pay for that at the time?
It was planned for, but I, we did not use it as planned, as I recall. Because there were some grant, it was decided there was some grant money for that, let me, I'll look that up and get back to you.
And that's why I just wondered about.
The details, but, yeah.
Where does this grant go, does it go back to your department, the nine-one-one fund?
Well, St. Louis County Sheriff's Office was the one that, was the kind of one heading it up, so we pay that, they reimburse us through the grant.
And so it comes back into your department as a revenue for this year, or is this going to like a reserve, or how does this?
It just goes in to cover the cost of the, of the equipment and the update.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to get the years straight, because we did it in one year, now we receive it in the second year, and I just was wondering how that shows up in the budget.
Yeah, and I, like I said, I, I don't think I printed out the right paperwork here as I was, as I was heading out the door, so unfortunately, I didn't notice that until about ten minutes ago, so.
I was just curious of how, how in your budget, when we see your budget request for next time, where this shows up, that's what I was.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that's gonna look.
Okay.
Yep, and I, I certainly don't know, but my guess is that it looks like it's covering from costs already incurred.
I do know that this is, uh, covered under the E-nine-one-one program, so the grant, we get about seventy-two thousand a year from the state telephone, uh, fee, which has covered the costs over time, but this, uh, this project is bigger than that, and so the grant is help, is gonna help cover additional costs, because I think we're down very close to using the funds that have been set aside for E-nine-one-one, and so we will need the grant funds to keep that, um, solvent and not use levy dollars, so. I haven't seen the whole picture yet, so I really can't comment beyond that, but.
Well, I just, I just wanted to verify if it, if we used bonding money.
Some, I'm gonna look.
That some of it maybe should go back to pay, back, you know? I'm just questioning that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so, we didn't, we were actually underspent on the equipment bond, we've searched for other places to spend the rest of that during, because we wanted to spend that down in the three-year, uh, period. And so I thi, I think there's ongoing costs with this project, but there weren't any additional costs used in the time period to get that bond spent last year, uh, when we needed to finish spending it. So, anyway, that bond is used up on some other.
Right, and I thought it was used for this, but maybe that, I was.
I'm not sure the timing worked.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Otherwise, we can entertain a motion for this.
I would motion to approve the nine-one-one grant for the system.
Thank you, Commissioner Swalson, we have a motion, is there support?
Starlee's support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starlee, any further discussion? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor? Aye, opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fagerman. Be safe out there.
Yeah, thanks.
Item six now, maintenance, uh, six A courthouse concrete repairs. Mr. Silence, good morning.
Good morning. I'm here to ask, uh, to get approval for getting this stairs fixed out front and around the building. I asked for five different quotes, I only have two, and I would like to go with the cheapest one from HMI out of Duluth, and that's for thirty-three thousand, four hundred dollars. A little bit more than what we expected, but I think it's a good price considering all.
Very good, thank you. Any, any questions for Mr. Silence? Commissioner Starlee?
Thank you. So the least expensive one compared to the other ones will give you confidence that they've got good workmanship and good concrete and all of that?
Yes, that, everything was bid apples to apples, they kind of have a little bit different way of approaching it, but I'm confident that they'll do a good job, they're the company that is working on the break wall down in the Marina. And they come highly recommended, so I think they'll do a really good job.
And that's to repair the steps and to do the work around the pillars, is that right?
Yes, and out front, the main entryway where we have them pockets there, they'll take that whole area out and do that also. These stairs that go down here on the east side are crumbling and they're gonna break apart and that would be not good. So, and also, the front ones that go down the main stairs out to the front of the building.
Then the door will be usable?
Yes.
Okay. That's good.
And, and you, Commissioner Hawkins?
Yeah, thanks, um, Brian, um, how did you decide, or how do you make the decision of fixing the courthouse steps over fixing the exhaust at the highway department or the boilers? That you have such a long list that you gave us of what to do, and I'm wondering, how did this one rise to the top?
Yeah, we have the building committee who helps me decide what our priorities are, and it's pretty much what I go by, and also it's a real safety issue out here. So that brings it to the top of the list.
I'd like to see a list, a list of everything, um, and I'm gonna kind of say something about the highway department and their, uh, transportation plans. Very helpful to me as a Commissioner to know, have, have it listed out exactly what the projects are, what's being planned, not just for right now, for this month, but for the year, for three years. Ten years is wonderful, I get, you don't really know if that's gonna happen in ten years, but I think it's really important that we've had maintenance issues with our county buildings for a long time now. And we keep putting it off and putting it off, and then it costs a lot of money. I think we need to come up with a long-term maintenance plan for all our county buildings, so I'm going to request that, that I see a list of everything and then we have, I mean, I don't know how to decide this one's more important than that, I thought Josh's office was pretty important, and I haven't seen anything on that yet.
All right.
Well, and, yeah, um, I, I just wanna, you know, recognize that when we did our building tours, we, we were able to see many, if maybe not all of the projects and, and items, but that was a good, um, uh, a good place for us to get some perspective, um, and then, but you're right, it is, it would be helpful to have a, a printed list or, or whatever, um, and kind of that, but it, it's always changing, and I think Brian does a really good job at addressing needs as they come up, and it's almost like one emergency will come up and then another emergency and things get pushed off. And then also, having limited budgets, it's really important to try to navigate all that, it's not an easy thing, but it would be helpful to have more comprehensive, but we are, we're working on that, and, yeah, it's.
But as far as budget, as far as budgeting, it's helpful to plan a budget if you know what's.
Absolutely.
What's in the hopper.
Yep, and we, I think we all are on the same page there, we all wanna get there, it just takes time and, as I said, different priorities or things pop up and it's, it's not easy by any means, so, not saying that you, you're saying it is.
I'm not.
No, right, right, no.
It's not easy, I know it. It's necessary, though.
Mr. Yorkie, you had something to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hawkins, I, I completely agree with you, we do need that list. This afternoon, the Budget Advisory Committee is going to be meeting, and that group has also agreed to serve as our Facilities Advisory Committee, and I'm gonna be presenting some information, um, that will help us start down the path of getting that list together. It is something that, that we do need, um, we did actually, um, three, four years ago, as I know you're aware, uh, we did have a plan, a capital improvement plan, uh, that included recommendations about where to, where to make investments in our buildings. That plan is in need of update, and the conversation we're gonna have this afternoon with the, with the Budget Advisory Committee will start us down the path of updating that plan and making sure that we have something that we can show this commission and also the community about how those dollars are gonna be invested, I agree that it's, it's very much needed.
Thank you.
And I, and I serve on that and would be happy to visit with you after our meetings.
I'm on that one too.
Yep, so.
Commissioner Starlee, you had something?
Thank you, well, we can have ten things on our list, but here we've got the people already in town working, so we don't have to bring up anybody from Duluth.
That's a good point.
So if this was at the bottom of the list, seems to me it should rise to the So if this was at the bottom of the list, seems to me it should rise to the top because we can have them right here. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, that's, I, I appreciate that, too. That's, that's happened a number of times, I feel like, where we try to, for efficiency's sake, jump on something, and so that's kind of why it's a very dynamic. But I think we're all on the same page as far as wanting that comprehensive, and Brian, Brian is, too. It'd be really helpful for him, too. So thank you for, for bringing that up.
Mr. Chairman, one, one other thing I'd like to note is that I've been talking with Brian about this project for months, and I just want to recognize his good work in, in getting these two bids, because he has made repeated phone calls to, to vendors, trying to get folks to respond with bids, and it's been very difficult. And it's kind of a small miracle that we're actually at a point where, where we can make a decision about fixing these stairs. So Brian, I, I just want to say thank you for your work on that.
Thanks.
Also, also protecting taxpayer dollars here. We had some bids earlier that were higher, and so just our last conversation, we backed down on that, and now here we are. So I'm excited. Thank you. Any further good discussion here, or any, any questions? I did, I did note one difference that I thought maybe we should talk about, and it was just the painting of the railings. Is that something you feel like is, is manageable? That, that was excluded in the, in the first proposal versus the second, so.
Right. No, I asked that question also, but we can paint it. We painted the railings probably four times since I've been here. It's really just part of a day to do that, so.
Okay, well, great. I didn't have any other questions myself. All right.
Complete the needed repairs for the concrete at the courthouse here?
All right, we have a motion, is there support?
Starley, support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. Any further discussion? And I would just say explicitly that's HMI was the quote there. Yep. All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Silence.
Thank you.
Moving right along to item seven, the highway department, 7A. Equipment replacement policy. Good morning, gentlemen.
So I'm going to start us off with the, kind of our plan for equipment replacement. You'll recall, back in January and February, we took some ideas to the Highway Committee and then as well as the Committee of the Whole, and kind of tossed around a lot of different plans for equipment replacement and what that might cost. And, and then we kind of went off in different directions, and when we started talking about budget in a meeting with Administrator Yorki, we decided it'd be best to bring this for board approval because there was an old plan from 2014 that had been board approved. Our current budget request does reflect this plan, but we thought it'd be good for you to have a closer look at kind of where we landed. The plan that we are recommending is, was attached to the agenda, but you'll recall, the 2014 plan was a much more aggressive and thus expensive plan, and that it hadn't been followed before we came here. And so basically, 28 of the 69 pieces of equipment in the plan have already gone past the window of when they would have been replaced according to that board-approved plan. Roughly, to get back on track, if we wanted to try and get back to that plan, we'd be looking at 2.71 million just in one year to get back on track. Of course, not going to happen. And even beyond that, then going on to 2023, we'd be looking at approximately, starting out with $640,000 per year in equipment expenses, and then roughly a 2% inflationary adjustment is what we were talking about then to keep our, our equipment replacement budget in the positive. It was clear that that, that wasn't a reasonable idea and really didn't seem very practical. I presented kind of a mid-rage plan that pushed a few things out, just in how long we use equipment. And even when, starting with that idea, it was, still needed a half a million budget boost right from the beginning. That was looking at, I'm sorry, it was half a million for 2022 in equipment replacement plus another boost of 441,000. And we were still talking about 2% inflation from that 500 grand a year. Again, that seemed not like something that we were going to be able to fund. So finally, we presented this idea of, you know, our, our most important equipment is our plow trucks and our graders. They get used all the time, all year, snow, all kinds of different emergency response, so much of our work. We have 14 of those between the plow trucks and the graders, and we thought, well, what if we just start getting one a year? What, what would that look like? And similarly, I found that MinDOT's general practice is also a 14-year plan for their plow trucks. So that seems, like I mentioned then so often, you know, we don't need to reinvent the wheel as MinDOT does. They do a lot of research, they have a lot of people. Of course, sometimes we're going to stray, but it's a good place to start is, what does MinDOT do? So, so we kind of looked at 14 years for the plow trucks. We discussed a lot with our mechanics and looked at some of our records on grader repair, and we did bump those up to 12 years instead of 14. We pushed our pickups out to approximately a 20-year replacement. I think they had initially been at like 10 or something like that in the original plan, so we're pushing those out quite a bit. You know, they don't see a whole lot of use in winter. We have redundancy. Obviously, if one pickup breaks down, we have more pickups. If one plow truck breaks down, we're not plowing. So, you know, we're kind of looking at the priority of our equipment there, and that's why, you know, as importance goes up to that piece of equipment, we're looking at a sooner replacement time, obviously hoping for more reliability that way. Heavy equipment, you know, we have a front-end loader that's 30-plus years old and it still scoops great. Again, we have redundancy, so I thought 30 years seemed like a, a good place to start with those. Some smaller equipment, like our Skidsteer mini excavator, we use a lot. They take a little more abuse, bumped those up. So that starts with, our budget request for this year for equipment is $445,000. And, and then we, to make sure that we didn't go negative, we went to a 3% inflationary rate going forward from this year for our plans. And doing that, we're able to stay positive in our funds, we're able to build up, you know, a little bit of an eggshell. And when we get to really big purchases of graders again, we've got that money ready to go. We're not asking for any, you know, surprises. And we're creating a little bit of a cushion so that when things come up, again, we're prepared. This year, just in the last few months, I've been getting information, obviously, a lot of our things are made out of steel, and steel has gotten very expensive. Our truck bodies are expected to go up, so the dump box, the plows, the things like that are expected to go up at least 10% next year. Thankfully, the truck itself, the cabin chassis is only looking at 3%. Obviously, they're much larger and have much more purchasing power than our local truckbody companies. But thankfully, even just kind of looking at going into this plan, we've, we have enough cushion at the moment to be able to absorb something like that. But it's just kind of an example of how we're working really hard to come up with a good plan, but it's still going to, you know, it's a flexible thing that in the future, every year, we're going to look at, what did things cost? Is our plan still reasonable? You know, do we have to, you know, make changes as needed? But it's certainly, you know, good to have our plan regardless. A roadmap going forward, if I recall, I think we planned out 28 years. So we're really doing our best to make sure, as long as we have any piece of equipment, we're planning for its replacement already, even if it's 30 years into the future, or 28 for our biggest excavator that we just bought. And I also want to mention, so purchasing these pieces of equipment takes a lot of time. So, you know, say you wanted to wait six months and see if steel prices go down, for example. To, to show why that's not very practical, our dump truck that we're looking at for next year, that we're planning on budgeting for, I have a soft order in for that just to get a spot in line, and we're looking at delivery of May of '23 for that truck. So it's a very long process, and heavy equipment is going to be just the same. So it's, just because we order something this, you know, ideally in January, once the budget has gone through, we might not be paying for that piece of equipment till a year and a half later. So it's kind of a, it's kind of wild how far out things have gotten right now when it comes to ordering heavy equipment. So that's why our, our budgetary number is based on years and time, so that, that money's available when we're ready for it. But one thing that we did talk a lot about in both the Committee of the Whole and the Highway Committee meetings is not just looking at age when we replace equipment. I mentioned Dakota County has a formula where they assess the need for replacement, you know? So when it comes up in years, we take into account some other factors and make sure that now is the right time to replace that piece of equipment. Other things that it takes into account besides the age are the miles or hours on it, its type of service. So again, like I was saying, plow trucks, you know, very high importance versus pickups. We have redundancy, you know, maybe not quite as important to have that running all the time. Maintenance and repair costs, the current condition and energy efficiency. It's kind of a complex formula, but I ran it just on the truck we're replacing this year and the truck we're looking to replace next year. They have different points ranges that, you know, I understand, we're not Dakota County, but just going for a reference point of what they're doing right now. They call 18 to 22 points as being good, 22 to 23, probably about ready for replacement, and 28 plus, needs immediate consideration. The truck we're replacing this year is at 47 points, and the truck we're looking at for next year is at 35 points. So again, just kind of an idea, a reference point. Well, over time, I think I'll keep doing that with each replacement and see how our replacement ideas match with that, you know, point scale and maybe come up with some ranges that are more practical for us. But it was interesting and I think revealing, just to go through that exercise with a few right off the bat. There's no, there's no perfect plan for us for equipment replacement. There's just kind of this range, right? So we want to maximize uptime for things that are really important. We have one spare plow truck and one that's kind of a floater that kind of helps out wherever needed. And it's kind of a balance between, you know, if you want to let things get much older and try to get more value out of it, that's when you'd probably have to look at maybe having another spare, because those things are needed right now. You know, even if it's something we can repair in a day or two, we can't plow your road in a day or two later, you know? We need it now. So that's kind of one, you know, something that you need to balance when you're looking at, obviously, the newer equipment, ideally the more reliable it's going to be. And as an example, even just since spring and summer, we have not had a spare. We've been using that spare revolvingly all this time. So it's, I mean, we're almost already at a point where another spare could have been warranted. Another thing that, a point that was kind of interesting to me is, our mechanic made is, you know, a lot of times people make comparisons to our equipment to a construction company, road builders. And his point that, was that most of them are seasonal. You know, they do maybe some winter maintenance, but a lot of those companies will use all winter to rebuild and maintain their equipment, and that's the same equipment that we're using all summer and all winter. So it does take more wear and tear. It does have a certain threshold of reliability that, you know, we need to make. And really, I think the, the last point I just want to make is this plan, the whole point of this plan is to create stability. And, you know, we're always going to be adjusting it, we're always trying to make it work the best we can, but certainly, looking at as far as we are, this should really set the table for really boring conversations when it comes to equipment replacement. And I think we can agree, especially the last few weeks, that boring sounds pretty good. So really, we're just looking for a motion to, well, to discuss, and if possible, to approve this plan so that it can guide our budgetary requests in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Dix. Any questions right off the bat from Commissioners? Commissioner Solson?
Not a question, but a, just an overall comment. I, I really applaud the efforts by the Highway Department, both on the roads and on the equipment replacement. This is actually the model of how you look at capital replacements, capital investments. This is a great foundation. The only reason, reason it's hard to vote for even this is because it doesn't meld in everything else that has to be weighed against it in priorities in the county. But this is actually the model of how you do that. You got the involvement from the committees, you got all these things that baked into this. I've talked to several of the committee members, and they, they really felt like they were engaged and they were listened to in setting the replacement, you know? So I'll just state that now. Robbie, I'm not trying to cut you out, but yours is exactly the same type of thing with the thought process and what's gone into it. And the funding is a little different because it's dynamic through the grant process and everything that goes with that. But this is what we need. It's a great start. I certainly support it. You know, the only thing that will amend it as we go forward is we're going to be measuring that against all these other things that are out there. And once we can prioritize all of that together, then we'll be able to be more confident in our decisions as we're doing. But this is a fantastic way to, to get that start, so I applaud that.
Thank you, Commissioner Solson. Yeah, it, one step at a time, right?
That's exactly right. You got to start somewhere.
Yeah.
It's a great start.
Yeah, yeah. And I think.
That's the high bar for the rest.
That's, that's, I guess I don't have the historical perspective as well, but that could very well be what happened with the previous plan, too, is just trying to factor in all the other.
Overcome by events.
Yeah, all the others happening, so. But, you know, any, any, any other comments or questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Starley?
Amen. Right on.
Yeah. Very good, yeah, very, very thorough. Really appreciate all the work put into this and the thoughtfulness and the strategy, and, yeah, I'm very, very pleased myself, too. So thank you very much.
Thanks.
Well, I'd entertain a motion at this point without any further questions or comments.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Sullivan.
I would like to move to approve the updated equipment replacement plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. We have a motion, is there support?
Support.
Commissioner Hawkins supports, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Dix. And then we're on to item 7B with the updated Transportation Improvement Plan. Engineer Haas, good morning.
Good morning. It's tough to follow, so I'll try my best. I don't know if, we didn't include the old Transportation Improvement Plan as it, I think it's up on the website now. But one of the, you know, that was something I had to present on, I think like my second month here, so needless to say, I didn't have zero input on it. But one thing I noticed was that, you know, we have a big county and there are a lot of needs, and that plan was light. How about that? You know, it was like a project a year. That was about it. And so, you know, now that we've had some time to kind of digest and see kind of what the needs are, I thought it was prudent to kind of put this out there and say, here's an update. To, you know, here's what I see, here's what I'm staring at. We've talked about the infrastructure needs throughout the county, and I don't know how many different committees and cows, and probably here, too, and so we're all kind of familiar. There's, there's, there's work to do. I'm not bored, so, you know, there's things to do. The biggest balance I think we face is, is funding. How are we going to do this? And, you know, what, what's neat, and I think I included it in the summary, was there's a lot of different funding mechanisms out there. Federal, federal grants, there's, you know, the bridge replacement, you know, BROs funding, it's a great acronym. There's FLAP funding, Federal Lands Access. Federal, federal grants require just a little more paperwork. That's fine, we still get a bridge, and that's great. You know, other options is town bridge bonds, those aren't guaranteed, neither are the federal ones. There's a lot of non-guaranteed, a lot of competitive money out there, but we just have to go get it. We've got, you know, this past year, we just got a little over $1.1 million in grants. All of that was competitive. So it's feasible, we can do this. So obviously, you know, there's the transportation sales tax as well. I know we're bonding against that on, on two projects, and so that'll eat into some of that annual revenue, but the nice thing is, is we have a pretty good cash balance built up at the moment. And I think it, it was a couple of board meetings ago, we were talking about that. at the moment. And I think it, it was a couple board meetings ago, we were talking about that. You know, for example, with like the Cross River Bridge and the Carlson Creek Bridge, originally those were slated as TST funds. But because of our new designated UT roads, we can go after different funding. So that opens up, you know, town bridge funding, which is huge. It's like eight or nine bridges throughout the county. And that's money we don't have to use out of TST then, which means all of that money can go towards other things. Needless to say, there's money to be had out there. The proposal I want, or the plan I put forward here, none of this is, is pie in the sky stuff. These aren't $15 million reconstructions. This isn't anything, we're not going to win any awards, but we're going to have really nice infrastructure. If, you know, hopefully if this goes, if this goes according to plan or even close, all of our deficient bridges will be replaced in the next six years, which would be awesome. That would make me happy. Yeah, it's just kind of, here's, here's what I see and here's how we can do it. There's a lot of, like I said, there's a lot of different funding mechanisms. So if there's specific questions on a particular project, I'd be more than happy to elaborate on it. I think the map is telling, if you look at that, these are all over the place. It's the whole county. So I would, I guess, entertain a discussion and hopefully a motion to approve it. It's a living document, so I'll probably be here every year talking about it. Things will move around. It's the nature of the beast. We talked about that before. You know, 2022 looks really busy. Some things will probably move and that's fine. Yeah. So I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. Commissioner Starley?
Thank you. Thank you for doing this. I really appreciate it. The 2020, has that been done?
Yes. So 2020, we are wrapping up. Let's see, Segal, Larch, and the Sag Slump all have one lift of pavement on. We're waiting for the last lift to go on, kind of the last few inches. Should be done before Labor Day. And what did I miss? Oh, Friedenberg. And that should be done as well in the next couple of weeks. Oh, 2020, you're referring to Trout Lake and Pine Mountain. That got done before I got here. And then Two Island also got done as well.
Okay, so we're done there. So in the West End, we actually have a stoplight on Highway 61. We haven't had that in a long time.
Oh. Probably weird.
I think it's MINDOT working in the ditch. But anything in the future for Tofti Park Road?
Could be. That one's a difficult one. And I think you and I have talked about that because of, that, that's a county road. And so there, we're very tied to just, you know, there's no state aid funds to go after there. I know we went after that Spro grant for that area and we didn't get it for there, but we got it in a different area. And so I think that's one of those that can, you know, definitely be added to this once we try and figure out how we're going to pay for it. The brunt, you know, the brute force approach, I guess, would just be, that would be straight levy money, which we don't have anything built up at the moment for it. But my hope is to change that over the next few years so that on the Tofti Park Roads of the county, similar, I think Commissioner Solson, we were talking about, was it 87 or 88, one of the two, another paved section of road that is just county levy dependent road, you know, there's, there's very few ways to fix that outside of direct levy impact, which, which is normal. That's, that's fine. You run into that a lot. So work in progress.
And then we have the conflicting pothole at the bottom of Sabiel Trail on Highway 61.
That I have talked about with MINDOT quite a bit and that, well, once I think our construction season wraps up here, it's a unique one because it's MINDOT's right of way, but it's our road that comes in. So we see that in a lot of places. But yeah, as to what exactly we should do there. MINDOT likes to do things only when they're going to be in the area. And so, you know, it kind of depends on, on their schedule. And so I just asked, you know, well, can we just do something? In discussions.
I was hoping that there would be some concrete work being done when they're there now.
Right.
However, the pothole is full of water. So when you make a right on Sabiel Trail, don't go immediate. Go around the pothole or you might lose your right front tire.
Yes. That, that's a tough one too, because the road comes in, it's at an angle. It's not a nice 90-degree, you know, intersection. And so that's why you see exactly what you're seeing there. Yeah.
We did try a few Band-Aid approaches. We filled it up with gravel and anytime you have a heavy rain, it washes it out instantly. So I did give one shot, but it does require a little more involvement than we were able to give it so far.
Well, let's hope for infrastructure money coming from out east.
Well, and that's what I'm hoping for too and why I wanted to get this thing out there in front of everybody. So if we need to have some type of approved plan, we can say, hey, we got this. So.
Great. Thank you for this.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. Any other questions from commissioners or comments?
I guess my only other, my other, only other comment is I really appreciate the fact that between these two, they're, they're personally involved. And I really like the fact that, that they don't just talk to people about it, they go look at it. You know, they're eyes on, as you can tell in the discussions, they know exactly where you're talking about, even though all the roads and things, I get them mixed up in my own mind. But they have a way somehow of compartmentalizing and getting all that in there and keeping it straight. So I really appreciate that, that eyes-on approach so that you can actually prioritize and have a much better sense of what's going on. And that's, that's what we need to be able to make these decisions. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Solson. Any other questions or comments? Only, only other thing I would add is, you know, this, this plan seems ambitious and I like that. And maybe that's just me not having enough perspective. But, and the previous plan, I think, is a really, a really good reference point as well, just because even though it was light, it is important to have that plan in place and to, you know, you could almost say this plan worked off of that last plan. And so just having some plan in place, I think there's a lot of value there. And having a good plan in place, there's even more value. So thank you for putting a good plan out there. Any other comments, questions? Otherwise, entertain a motion here.
I would motion to approve the transportation improvement plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Solson. We have a motion. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have support. Any further discussion? Hearing or seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Haas.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah, have a great day. Let's see here. Now we're on to item eight. And I mean, we should probably just take a break. No, I'm kidding. Eight, eight A with Land Services. Mr. Tim Nelson, good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. This actually is a pretty quick item, so could go right to break after me in this sense. I'm here just to basically request to set up a public hearing date in front of the Board of Commissioners here for 9:30 a.m., Tuesday, September 14. And the purpose is to go ahead and recreate or reestablish subordinate service district that had been created. A little bit of background is almost 20 years ago, there was a development out on Caribou Lake and that triggered an environmental review. We determined to expand the environmental review and do a complete, what's called an AUAAR, and looked at the overall watershed to look for all sorts of impacts that were happening within there. It included Bigsby Ward, Caribou Lakes, and Agnes Lake. And as a result of that, a subordinate service district was originally created then to go ahead and partially help fund that, that environmental review that was taking place, but also then continue on with a mitigation plan, which included water quality monitoring. That was for a period of five years. The Caribou Lake Property Owners Association continued to come back to the Board of Commissioners and request that that subordinate service district be continued in five-year increments to kind of perpetuate the water quality monitoring and to help fund that process. And so that, that had been perpetuated in five-year increments until inadvertently, a couple of years ago in 2019, it just was, it lapsed. We didn't come back to get it renewed. And now, so they are coming back to want to renew that subordinate service district. Originally, the district had included the entire watershed, all the properties in the watershed. And in this request, it is, is kind of constricting that boundaries to just be the riparian properties on Caribou Lake itself. And so the, the purpose is to, again, continue for another five-year period of water quality monitoring, but also to establish funds to combat AIS, aquatic invasive species. And so this is just to set up in accordance with Minnesota Statute 357, or 365, what is it? 375B, to set up the public hearing here just to go ahead and discuss that in front of the board. So basically, that's what I'm here to do.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Any questions from commissioners? Oh, Commissioner Starley?
Thank you, Tim. The association, those people that live around Caribou Lake are vigilant, out there testing the water three and four times a year. I attend their association meetings when they have them. And they're just on top of everything with that lake water and all that. So it's good that they're back in the stream of things here with the subordinate district. Thank you for helping them out with the public meeting, hearing.
Yep.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Starley. Any, any questions? Otherwise, we could entertain a motion, it looks like, for, I'll make the motion for, for Pete's sake, to set, to set the public hearing for the Caribou Lake SSD, 9:30 a.m., Tuesday, September 14, for the consideration of reestablishing the Caribou Lake SSD and the proposed special assessment. Is there support?
There is support.
Commissioner Starley has support. And any further discussion? Hearing or seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Does anyone need a break? Not I. Moving on to item nine, auditor. Nine is the general fund budget review. Auditor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is the general fund budget review that we do quarterly each year. So this is, we're finally caught up. This is quarter two for 2021. To summarize, you can see in the top right-hand corner and the bottom, at 50% of the year, we are at 57% of the revenue and 46% of the budget in expenditures. So I would say that that's fairly normal, routine-type numbers. Expenses are actually, I'd say, a little bit low because typically, maintenance and the community center are high because of the snow, the winter months that fall early. So we're actually in good shape for expenses. Revenues are typical. As soon as we get the BWC money, we, that kicks us over 50% for sure. So, and this is even including all of the money we receive since we are setting a portion of that aside until the reappraisal is done. So, or it would be even higher. So then what I've done is just highlighted some of those that are a little bit outside the bounds of 50%, either revenues or expenditures, highlighted in yellow, and then put some explanation for those in red at the bottom. And I'll just stand for questions.
Thank you. Auditor Powers, any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Starley?
Yes, on page 74, where it says levies are paid for the different entities, library, historical society, but Schroder isn't. What happened there? Levy paid in full in? There's a blank.
I'm not sure. This is, what I'm looking at here is Schroder Historical Society.
Just doesn't say the month when it was paid.
At the very end.
Very last page.
Explanations.
Paid in full. Oh, okay. Same month, June.
Same month, okay. Okay. It looked obvious there was something-
Yeah, sorry.
Missing. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. Any other questions from commissioners? All right, then I'd entertain a motion here.
We approve it.
The general fund budget review?
Oh, just to accept it. Just to accept the review. Yep.
Understood. Then I will, I will make that motion to accept the general fund budget review for second quarter 2021.
Thank you, Commissioner Solson. We have a motion. Is there support?
Sullivan supports.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Powers. On to nine B, the proposal for the audit firm.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Some, some background first, though. Until 2017, counties did not have the ability to make the decision to go for a private audit or not. The state auditors did allow some to go private over the years, but that was their decision solely. Largely, a lot of large counties were allowed to do it. And then in 2017, there was a law change so that we could make that decision. The county board at that time decided to stay with the state auditor and we actually signed a three-year engagement letter with the state auditor. So then, this is the first year under the state law that we would be allowed to go for a private audit. We had to notify the state auditors last year that we might do this. So we've done that. And so we spent now the last few months actually soliciting requests for proposals and we received four very good proposals. And we had a team, as you can see here, that the administrator, the financial coordinator in my office, the PHHS, I forget her title, I'm sorry.
Fiscal supervisor.
Fiscal supervisor, Lori. So we reviewed the proposals. We interviewed all four of the teams. I spent a long time calling all of the references and calling them back and actually calling references that weren't on their list just to get a little wider view of what they said. We came up with some questions, even on the references, and were answered to our satisfaction. And Kelly and I also had talked with each one of them prior to the interviews too. She's the primary contact for, for audits. So I wanted her to be comfortable with all that. And so we came down in the end that, that all four firms could do the work for us. And I'd had that from several of the reference too. They said, some said, you have the big four in Minnesota. So there's a couple of more expensive firms that didn't apply. But generally, these are a great audit firms and any one of them could do our audit sufficiently. But we were comfortable with this company, with our interview, with our personal calls, et cetera. And they also happen to be the lowest price of the four. So in the end, this was our committee's decision to go forward with Red Path and Company. I was hoping to have an engagement letter today. He's been on vacation, but I didn't get it today. So I'm hoping that you will approve the proposal and then allow us with Molly to review it potentially, to go forward with the engagement, just so that they can get started on the process. One of the things we liked about this firm is they want to start quickly, meeting with us and getting the background, et cetera. So our next meeting is until September 14. So I'd like to give them that assurance to go ahead and start that work. The base price isn't completely set because there are some variables. Depends on our, if we have more than one, what's called a single audit, that's a federal audit, those are a lot more work, et cetera. So this is based on one single audit. We may have two and, and then there's some money for travel and preparation. So the base amount, I estimate about $45,000. Our state audit has cost us as much as $89,000 a year and it varies from year to year with GASB pronouncements, et cetera. So anyway, that's, I'll just ask if there are any questions and ask for approval.
Commissioner Hawkins, please.
So this firm, they have experience doing county audits, government audits?
They have a ton of experience with all- They have a ton of experience with all types of entities within counties, cities, large cities. They do have, they had one engagement with a county also. So they do know county auditing also. They're probably, I think they're the largest firm in the, based in the Twin Cities. There are some larger firms that have offices there, but I think they're the larger, at least in St. Paul, they are the largest firm I know of. Maybe not in Minneapolis.
And do they have an estimated timeframe of how long it takes them to do a county audit?
Yeah, they're, they're all close in the same timeframe to do an audit. They actually could start quicker than a couple of the others. So our audits should be done at least as fast as our state audit. We're expecting it quicker. And a lot of that, I think, will be up to us, how fast we can get it done. Their schedule indicates that if we need it done by June sometime, they'll, they'll comply with that. So, so I think it'll be in our ballpark to get the work done for them.
And are we doing like a one-year?
Two years. Yeah, we put it out for two years. That's, that's the minimum that the state, when you leave the state, they want you to be gone for two years, I think for their scheduling purposes. So we decided, since it was the first time, we would just stick with the two years, and then we can reevaluate. So we may go through this process again in two years. We'll see.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Auditor Powers? I don't have a question about this particular item, and I wasn't involved at all with the state's decision to allow this. But I'm, I am curious if, if you're privy to any discussions about the ripple effects within the state because of this. Like, it's going to save us a bunch of money, and that's awesome. I'm just, I'm just wondering why it took so long, and yada, yada. Another, another, another discussion.
I don't know the ins and outs of that. I do, some of their factors have to be their staffing. They have regional staffs, and I'm sure they want to keep them sufficient number of audits to keep a full staff.
Sure.
That has to be part of their
Yeah.
Analysis. In this case, our state auditors, they, they've already reached out. They have more than enough schools, et cetera, coming on board. So they don't have an issue with staffing regarding us leaving. And I'm, I'm glad of that, because I think it's, I think it's really important that they stay in the game. And I wouldn't be opposed to going back to the state auditor at some point, let's see what their prices are, and et cetera, later on.
Sure.
Because I think they should stay in the game in order to be sharp on this, in order to monitor
Yeah.
what we're all doing.
Right.
And not just be distant
Right.
to it.
Yeah. And that is part of my concern, too, is just how, all those dynamics.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But we've, we've, I think we're ready for it. We'd like to see an outside perspective.
Yeah.
We've had some trouble getting answers to our, you know, there are adjustments made, and then they're on to the next, the next job. And I've got new staff, relatively new for, for the auditing game, let's say, who needs these kinds of answers. Like, why did you make that change? So that you can get down to the nuts and bolts of it and understand it and make progress on the audit. So
Yeah.
We're really looking, one of the things we said with all the firms is we want to meet the GFPA best, there's an award for finance. We want to meet that within two years. That's our, that's our goal. They said they can get us there, so.
Great.
That's exciting.
All right. Well, entertain a motion there.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Sullivan.
I would like to move to approve the proposed audit by Redpath and Company for services for the years 2021 and 2022.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Just want to point out again, the $30,000 savings, our taxpayer find savings. And, and I want to thank Auditor Powers and the team for going through this process and doing just that. So, bravo there. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Powers. And on to item nine C, the loan write-offs.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Originally, I put this on the consent agenda. For me, it's a housekeeping item, but not thinking to the whole board that's not familiar with it. This, the one write-off, the large write-off particularly, for a Devil Track Resort Company, LLC, for $47,147.66. That's actually been sitting there on our books for about eight years. And I actually thought we had taken it to the board, but we hadn't. I asked Kelly, how come you don't, you know, designate it that way? And she said, well, I haven't seen that. And I went back, I couldn't find it in the minutes. So I said, well, let's, let's clean it up. Let's take it to the board. So that, that company went bankrupt, was, the bank foreclosed back in 2014. We attempted collection on the promissory note, and Molly, I know, reached out to other firms, real estate firms, that said our documentation wouldn't, wouldn't hold up if we, from the party that actually had money to sign that promissory note, they said it wouldn't, it wouldn't go anywhere. It wasn't worth the effort of going, let's say, to court, et cetera, to try to collect that. The outcome of that is that Molly reached out, and we now have documentation that we believe is sufficient for any reasonable case like that. We have a very detailed loan agreement and a security agreement that backs up the promissory note, where we just had a promissory note in the past. So that was a good outcome of that, is that we avoided maybe some other future situations like this. And the other one is a very, was a very small loan, about $6,000, that Sean Merrivigley paid down to 536.17, and we've not been able to contact her since. So that's been a number of years. Committee doesn't feel it's worth the effort to try to track her down wherever she may be. So I'll just stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. I, I just, I appreciate in the summary, just the, the perspective of the, the loans provided and then the, the write-offs and just, because it, it's a lot of money. But then when you put it in perspective of, of the loans provided and just the, how the fund has been structured and, and worked, it seems like a very successful thing. And this is not a pleasant part of this, but it's part of doing business, I guess.
We've, we've had bankers on our committee over the years, and they, they say we have an excellent loss to loan ratio. They said a lot of banks were the envious. So we've done fairly well that way. I think this, this would make it seven total. I've been here 30 years, and it started before I got here. Yeah, you hate it when it happens, but
Right.
And we're in probably the riskiest position. We don't make the biggest loans, but we're always behind the banks.
Sure.
It's part of our guidelines, is that we don't compete with them. We're the one, the bridge that induces a bank to complete something that they might think is too risky otherwise. So that's part of our mission. So you do end up with some once in a while. I was amazed after the crash of 2008, nine, I thought for sure we would have more bankruptcies and losses from that. But we did have a partial with Clearwater, the Clearwater loan, but not even a, a full loss on that. So it just, partly that tells you the resiliency of the economy up here. Our tourist economy tends to not hit the dips that others do. So we've kind of weathered some of that by where we are.
The longer duration ones, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Any, any other thoughts, questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Swalson.
I would move that we approve the loan write-offs as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Swalson. We have a motion. Is there support?
Early support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Hearing are seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And item nine D, temporary liquor license.
Well, typically, Schroder has held this event for several years now, where they get a temporary one-day liquor license for some wine tasting events, et cetera. So we know they handle it well, et cetera. This year, typically, the request comes in, in June, July, way early. This one is like right on the edge. We should actually, that's why I added it on, because the state requires 30 days, they say, from our approval. And we're actually one day behind, even if you approve it today. Hopefully, they'll allow, allow this. I think they will. So I was, if you look at the actual, did I put the application in there? You'll see signatures in the wrong place, et cetera. So they're fixing that, even as we speak. I think you actually sent it already. So we'll get the final corrected form off to the state today. And they're getting me their insurance information, too. So this came in yesterday, so it was just kind of a quick, trying to get it, try to help them out and get it through, so.
All right. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Do, do, might we be liable because we're one day late?
Oh, there's no liability. It's whether or not the state will enforce their 30-day and say, we're not going to look at it. I don't think so. I don't think they'll do that.
That'd be my only concern, but otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
We'll mail that to them today.
Yeah.
As soon as it gets
Okay.
They were busy with their shoulder days.
Yeah. Well, I chalk, I have seen so many things like this in the last year and a half. I chalk, I chalk them all up to COVID. It just, just thrown things off. Things that were routine in the past are suddenly, you know, slips my mind. Where's my list? Whatever. Happens all the time now.
Where's my toothbrush?
Yeah.
All right. All right. I'll entertain a motion here.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Starley.
I'd like to approve the temporary liquor license for the Schroder Historical Society for one-day event, September 23rd, 2021.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion. Is there support?
Swalson supports.
Thank you, Commissioner Swalson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. And moving on to item 10, Administrator, Mr. Yorki, item A.
Mr. Chair, could we take a short break?
Absolutely. We'll recess for 10 minutes here.
Thank you.
Yes.
It was really interesting. Mary, you were there, too, for the five of us sitting in the room. And then they have four big, like that, like CDs.
Oh, yeah.
It's like, where am I supposed to look?
But it was nice the way they had set it up. And I just wanted to support the fact that they're trying to do it in person. But it's, you know, it's hard. So I think a hybrid is the way to go.
Well, as the, as the, what's it called? I can't remember. Which problem? Oh, the COVID, yeah. It's the COVID problem and the fall and the indoors and, I mean, clearly what's happening here in the county right now is pretty adverse, but, you know, we have to be diligent and then we have
It's the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're going to do a hybrid for our board meeting, but of course, we decided to do that, our board meeting in July. And then, of course, you know, what, 14, 15 faces in hospital weeks?
Yeah.
So we're still going to do it, and we're going to host it out of a higher ed. And, you know, it was the vote of the board to continue the hybrid, but I don't know, in current circumstances, it might be just the team of this company sitting in higher ed and everybody still, still being in, so.
And then sure, the conversation is going to be happening about the gala. What about that? Who are we really going to do that?
Well, Schroder had their anniversary celebration Saturday night. I just couldn't go. I just, I'm not going to sit there with 50 people trying to eat with a mask on, and it was hot.
Yeah.
So I just
No, I wanted to go and just get air and coffee.
Nah.
My kids want to hear him on Saturday in Duluth. Because he was in Duluth Saturday.
Oh, sure.
Friday.
Right.
But I was like, yeah.
Again, it's hard.
I could go on a wedding on Saturday. I'm like, oh.
Well, and you have a lot of kids there.
Anyone with children, you know, you don't want to bring home to you. You don't want your kids bringing home to you. I was thinking about that now.
Yeah, I could go hang out with my grandchildren. I wonder if I want to hang out with my grandchildren?
Where are they at? I don't know.
I babysat my two little girls on Saturday night, at 12 months and two and a half. And I've decided that I'm a lot different Nana than I was a mother, because I was only immersed in just being a parent. And they turned into the craft girl chorus of screaming and crying. And a two-and-a-half-year-old, "Oh, Mommy, you're dying. What are you doing?" They're all having a date, taking care of themselves. You're a dad. And then the little one started, and it was, then I called Jams, but I mean, Jams taxes, and he's just like, oh.
"I don't know, Ken, talk to your auntie in the store."
And he's like, I said, what do I do? And he goes, "Go get the stroller."
Oh, no.
Oh, my God, it was just a scare call.
Other covers, there's a big
We've probably gone fiery.
Five-gallon fire or something.
Oh, God. Oh, that was so funny. All right, so you're in the last
Well, that's just a joke. Mary, they play
So you're going back down to help with the fires at all?
Mm-hmm.
Are you planning on going back to help with the fires at all?
Yeah, I've got meetings up through Thursday, and then we'll see what it looks like this, you know, for this coming weekend. Yeah, I can tell you two days in a row, I'm ready for a nap.
Uh-huh.
Because you, I leave home just a little after 5:00 in the morning, and I don't get home until
Budget advisory.
Generally, 11:15, 11:30 at night.
Wow. Wow.
So when you stack those up.
Yeah.
And it's interesting, because
We've got the tour schedule.
The first day, I was on structure protection.
Which will be useful for the committee to see everything that the committee saw during the tour back in
We had quite a bit of downtime in the morning, because it was a very calm morning. And then around 2:30 in the afternoon, the wind picked up, and then we got quite busy.
But, you know, Commissioner Hawkins is right. I mean, we need to really get
Yesterday
all our ducks in a row in terms of
We were on the run right from the start.
That sheet that you sent from World, I mean, that's a really good start.
I had taken my computer to prep.
Yeah.
And my prep time came like
You're not going to stop.
It got, it got very challenging there for a while, because the wind's really picked up.
But, you know, we've got, we've got some good data to work on. It's not, it's not totally fresh.
They evacuated us, and I found a quiet spot.
Definitely pays a picture of what the meetings are.
Sat in the shade, read through all this stuff.
The projects we haven't done, obviously, those
And I just finished, walked back, and I was sitting there getting a drink, and let's go.
Wow.
We were chasing right behind it to get back in and assess the structures and, you know, put out fires that were coming up, running up on the structures, you know, this kind of things. of things. So, yeah, last night was, when we got back, we were tired. Really tired. And that's just, you know, these guys, I, you really gain appreciation for those wild land guys that are right there and everything they're doing is, they're on their feet all day long.
I did have a meeting with John Baccara back at the beginning of summer.
My only issue is, you know, the.
It was an important thing, but he's the principal with. And he said he'd be willing to do some follow up for us to help us update our, our facilities management plan. Basically, I think it's the expectation, they would use them for project management or something.
They do a great job.
There are lots of options on the table and I think we need to keep an open mind.
You had over 100 trucks.
You know, I'd be happy to use them, but there may be other approaches that we would want.
When it came time to evacuate and stuff, they did.
She was appreciated. She appreciated.
They did a really admirable job. Working emergency management. Ensuring that every single person, every single truck was okay on floor and in a safe area. You know, so, yeah, they did good. Very organized from that one.
All right. I'll call our regularly scheduled meeting back to order here. And we're on item, what used to be nine, but is now 10 with the administrator, 10A, the MOA with the U of M extension program. Mr. Yorki.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, commissioners and members of the audience and residents watching online. This item concerns a memorandum of agreement with the University of Minnesota Extension Program. Folks who've been paying attention to these, these meetings over the last few months know that we have been working to, to recruit for the community center and extension director as a result of the impending retirement of Diane Booth. And so we've been working in partnership with U of M to, to conduct a recruitment process. And we just recently interviewed three finalists, all of whom were really qualified. I think they were a really strong pool of candidates for the position. In order to make this fly, we do need to execute this agreement with, with the university. And the, basically what it would entail is the university would have oversight of the position. We would coordinate closely with them to make sure that all the programming that is offered through the community center continues. And that was a big, big requirement as we began this conversation with the extension program. And there was a very robust public engagement process to get input on what was most important to the community in terms of our filling this position. I feel like we got a lot of good input and I feel that the, the university has been very responsive to the things that we heard in those, in those information gathering meetings with the community. And so, you know, while the, while the oversight of this position will be different from a, from a residence perspective, I don't really anticipate that people are going to see a lot of change in terms of what, what we offer to the community. Certainly Diane's expertise is not going to be easily replaced. But that was part of the incentive for working with the extension program is Diane has such a wealth of knowledge regarding a whole range of issues related to agriculture, forestry, you know, plant diseases and whatnot. People in the community know that if they need that kind of information, they can call her and get it. And, and so knowing that that's, that's a really strong need, we thought that partnering with the extension program would provide us with, with access to some really great resources that the state has. And so that, that was the, the incentive for, for considering this, this arrangement. The way it works is that we would basically pay the extension program a fixed amount. And those are, those are rates that are set uniformly with all counties in the state who have extension agents. So this, this is a very common arrangement where a county will contract with, with the extension program to provide an extension agent, extension educator, and in our case, also the community center director. And so for the current year, for the remaining four plus months of the year, the rate is $96,708 annually. Due to retirements, the extension program was able to redo its cost structure in a way that will decrease the rate for 2022 to $85,000 a year. And I know the big question will be, how does this come out for us in terms of what we would be paying for salary and benefits if we were hiring this position ourselves? And it is comparable. And in fact, effective next, effective January 1 will actually be coming out a little bit ahead. So, you know, I, I feel like this is a really strong partnership. I've been very impressed. And Chairman Mills, I know you've been part of this process too and can attest to the, the strong sense of partnership that we have with the extension program. They've been very responsive and great to work with. And I feel very positive about entering into this agreement with, with the state to provide this, this position. And with that, I'll pause and stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Yorki. Any questions from commissioners? Concerns? Commissioner Storley?
Thank you. Well, as we all know, this position that Diane has had for 28, 29, 30 years.
32.
Really important. So we've never had to deal with updating anything with the university. So this comes at a time when we're looking at money. And I'm just wondering, before, did we consider her more of a county employee rather than an extension?
She, she was, yes. She was a county employee and she provides, provided services that an extension educator typically would provide. So she was very much in that role, but she was strictly a county employee.
I'm just mentioning that so the public understands it too. So the three candidates, the job description that was written and the three candidates that have been interviewed so far would be commensurate to the salary?
Yes. Pamela Dixon, our HR director, confirmed that the, the salary offer that the extension program would be making to our candidate would be in line with what we would be paying somebody starting that position at the grade that Diane's position was. So it is, it is aligned.
And that includes then being the director of the community center also?
It does, yes.
And the assistant, would she still continue?
Yes. Isabella Sheehan will still be in her current role.
Thank you.
Very good questions and it's a lot of ins and a lot of outs. And, yeah, I know it wasn't an easy decision going this route, but I feel pretty, as far as the, the agreement versus county employee, but I feel very confident with my experience thus far with extension as far as that hiring process and interview process and the search process was concerned. Many opportunities for, for feedback, many opportunities for questions and, and even changing course. They fielded asking for interview questions and then asked if those questions are what we're getting at and just very robust process all along. So I've been very impressed and, and their perspective is, I think, a really, a really great partnership that we can, we can lean on in the future. So I'm, I'm excited for, for this, for where this position can, can go and, and adjust. And, and they've always, along every step of the way, have been very sensitive to our needs as a community center, not just the extension services. So funny, funny thing though is almost every single program through the community center relates pretty directly to extension service. It's just maybe not necessarily on the egg side of things, but it's, it's, it's been really great, great experience all in all. So.
Yeah. Cook, Cook County has always been a little bit of an odd duck in terms of not having this kind of relationship with the extension program. So this kind of puts us back in line with, with what other counties typically do.
And is the committee close to selecting someone?
We, so there was an offer made to a, we, we did interview three finalists. An offer has been made to the top candidate and we expect to be able to announce very soon the acceptance of that offer.
That's even more exciting. All right. Any, any further questions or, or concerns or clarifications? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion.
Okay. I'll move to approve the memorandum of agreement with the University of Minnesota to provide extension programs and employ an extension educator slash community center director.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion. Is there support?
Storley's support.
Thank you, Commissioner Storley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Hearing or seeing none? All in favor? Aye opposed. Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Yorki. We're on now to 10B, the HRA.
Alrighty. As you all know, and as members of the public may know, there was a hearing on August 10th to gather public input on the need for a housing redevelopment authority. At that meeting, we had about a dozen people who spoke generally in, in support of the creation of an HRA. We also had four written comments that I read, also supportive of the HRA. There were questions about the, the financial impacts of creating this entity, how it would be funded, how, how the HRA would impact the levy. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. But generally speaking, there was support among participants in the hearing. And as I've noted in the agenda item write-up, there has also been a lot of support expressed in the community, just in conversations I've had with, with partner organizations and also just residents. There's, there's strong recognition that we have some real housing challenges and we need to take some, some bold steps to address those. The creation of the housing redevelopment authority would give us a really powerful new tool to start bringing resources into the equation and start undertaking some projects to get a range of, of housing into Cook County. And this would be not only construction of new, single family, multi, multifamily housing, but it would also be renovation of existing structures to make sure that they're livable and could also include energy efficiency as a component, which, which I think is, is really important. So the, the request before you today is based on the input that we gathered on August 10th to approve the creation of an HRA. This is not the finish line. This is one more step in the process. And obviously there are a lot more steps that we need to take. So what would happen next is if you approve the creation of the HRA, I would go about soliciting candidates for, for the HRA board. We are proposing that the board be separate from the EDA board. Initially, we talked about it being under the auspices of the Economic Development Authority. But there's enough interest, and the reason we, we proposed that initially is because we weren't sure we were going to be able to find enough folks willing to serve on a brand new board because we are a small community and many of the people who are interested in leading a public life are already doing so. So we initially thought, well, let's, let's just put this under the EDA. But in, in conversations over the last few months, it's become very apparent that there are a number of folks who are really interested in serving on an HRA board. And, and I will say those people have some really interesting experience that would make them, I mean, they're, we're talking about people who have actually experience in funding housing projects, who have financial management experience, who would just be really great board members and leaders for this, for this entity. And so the, the next step would be to solicit members for that board. The membership would need to be approved by the Board of County Commissioners. And then we would have to certify the members and send that to, to deed for approval. And so this, this resolution today is one foundational document to create the HRA. The next one will be the appointment of board members to, to sit on that board and begin the process of recruiting a director for the HRA. And I'll mention here, we also have some really qualified folks who have expressed an interest in that position when it is created. So, and, and at least one of them is, is not in Cook County, but very close by. So, you know, we feel really good about our prospects for, for seating a really strong board, getting a really qualified person on board to, to lead our efforts to develop a housing plan for the county and also to begin soliciting grants to, to fund projects. So that's, that's the action before you today. We're asking that you approve the creation of the HRA. And then the next steps, and I hope to come back to you possibly as early as September 14th, which would be our next business meeting, with a suggestion about people who would be interested in serving on the board. So that's, that's where we are. The other thing I wanted to mention is I had, under financial implications, I misunderstood something that I heard in the EDA board meeting that I need to correct. Currently, the, the funding for the EDA that this board approves includes $100,000 a year for housing related activities. And I heard Chairman Howard Hedstrom at, at a recent EDA board meeting say that that funding would remain dedicated to housing related activities. I think this is probably in part a result of wishful thinking on my part, but I took that to mean that this funding would actually be designated for the HRA. That was not Mr. Hedstrom's intent. And so in fact, when, when we come down to making a budget request for the HRA, we would be requesting $125,000 in new funding for that effort. So I wanted to clarify that and I apologize for that misunderstanding.
Thank you, Mr. Yorki. That's an important point that I think has a lot of public attention. And, and so how, that's for this year, right? And, and there's a little transition and overlap going on. I, I would expect it to shift after things are up and, up and roll, up and going. But I don't know, I guess I don't know about the EDA's board's thoughts on that and if there's been further conversation. And even if that's a necessary detail to be worked out right now, I think when we start talking budgets about the two organizations, that's when we can address that. But I understand that there, there's some transition and overlap for, for, for the beginning.
Mm hmm.
Any questions, concerns, comments? Commissioner Storley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would hope that as the names of people are being submitted for the board, that all areas would be represented in all the districts?
That's, that's a really great point. In fact, thinking about the composition of the board, I think it will be important to have good geographic distribution of, of members on that board. So the West End, Hillland and Grand Portage, the Gunflint and then Grand Marais, indeed.
So, I'm sorry.
Please, Ms. Hawkins, yeah.
I'm curious about when the bylaws and organizational paperwork, when do we get to see that?
Yeah. So, I mean, that's something that the board will need to be seated before it can start working on its bylaws. I have started getting sample bylaws from, from the Minnesota Housing Partnership. So that we can get a head start on that task. But that would be the, the responsibility of the new board to, to take care of.
Okay. So we approve this and then the new HRA board.
Correct.
Does all that. Okay.
Right.
And it doesn't come back to us?
So because you are, I, I would expect this board to receive frequent updates because this, because you are creating this entity. It's kind of like, like the EDA operates. It's kind of like the EDA operates now. I mean, you see their monthly meeting summaries, and it's going to be important for this board to stay abreast of what the HRA is doing. So, it's not like, we'll create this entity and you'll never hear about it again.
And so, as far as budget, it's going to be the same? The EDA has to come before this board and we give our blessing to their budget?
That's correct.
So, we're going to make sure the HRA is the exact same thing?
It is, it is. So, yeah, it will not, I mean, it has levy authority, so it can have its own levy, but that levy has to be approved by this board.
Okay. And I would agree, the $100,000 that is currently in the EDA budget, yeah, we put it there. I have not heard of any projects that's being designated for yet, so I question, that'll probably still be there at the end of December. But I would agree, we need to move that from EDA to HRA for projects and still fund the director position of an HRA. That it's not just $125,000 that is going to be needed for this, because we'll need a director, and we're, hopefully, that director has projects to do, and we're going to need to use some seed money?
Right.
To make those happen?
Exactly. Yep.
And I expect, hope maybe, that there'll be good coordination, HRA, EDA, County Board. I would also hope that we would have a commissioner sit in on the HRA meetings, just like we do with the EDA.
That was going to be my question.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, I think the way the EDA operates is almost exact model of how I expect the HRA to operate.
With a different focus, yep.
With a different focus.
Yep.
Right.
Well, these are really good things to speak about, right, in a public meeting? So, I'm glad we were asking these. Are there more questions or details we want to talk about before we make any motions? Is the horse dead yet?
I can kick it one more time.
Well, it's for good measure.
No, thank you.
Well, all right. Well, in that case, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Sullivan?
I would say, given all the discussion among our community members through the EDA, through all of us personally living through the housing crisis, either ourselves or knowing individuals, this has got huge community support. And so, given that and the huge need that we have, I would like to move that we approve for the creation of a Housing and Redevelopment Authority here in Cook County.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. We have a motion. Is there support?
County support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have support. Any further discussion? And, yeah, I just want to emphasize, this is not the solution. This is a tool. And I'm hoping it'll, it'll serve us well, so, and I believe it will. All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Yay! Moving on to item 10C.
Alright.
Grand Marais Art Colony Request.
So, this is a request that we receive every year from the Grand Marais Art Colony. The funding goes to support the arts fair that is held every summer. And I read at a recent meeting, a letter that we received from the Art Colony thanking this commission for the funding that supported the most recent event, which was very successful. Wanted to talk just briefly about the funding history of this. Auditor Powers was kind enough to run a report showing how much money has been allocated for the arts over the last, basically, 20 years. And so, going back to, and initially, I think the arts colony, according to this report, I don't think it was created until 2009. But for over 20 years, this board has been designating funding for arts in the community. Back in 2001, 2002, the allocation for arts was about $1,500 a year. By the 2009 to 2015 period, that allocation was about $5,000 a year. And then, for each of the last two years, the board has approved $10,000 for the art colony. And so, that is the request for FY '22. And again, it's, one thing that came up in a recent conversation was about getting information about how the dollars are spent. We can certainly follow up with the art colony to get more detail on the event, how many people attend, you know, what the estimated revenues of that are. Certainly, it has an economic impact on the community. It draws a lot of people. And so, we can certainly provide that moving forward. But the request today is to consider approving $10,000 for inclusion in the FY '22 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Yorki. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Hawkins?
Yeah, in previous years, we've used an application system for the arts. And are we not using that process anymore? There was a, they had to fill out a form, and there was a committee that decided which organizations to support?
We, that was not, let's say, renewed, so we haven't had a process for a couple of years now.
Okay. I have some concerns with this one. Certainly appreciate the art colony and the art festival. Think it's, I enjoy it immensely. But we do have a 1% sales tax in Cook County that pays for promotion of events, just like this. I also have a concern that the art colony purchased two commercial buildings in downtown Grand Marais, and Cook County taxpayers had to make up that $14,000 in commercial sales tax that we no longer get. And now, they're asking for another $10,000. I get it. They're a good organization. But I think we need to talk about, what are they already getting from us? And why do they rise to the top when we have other organizations? So, how do we decide this is the one that gets the $10,000? I'm just raising that question.
That's a good question. My limited perspective is just precedent for what, how the county board, the county has supported the organization in the past. And I, I don't know that we've had enough of a conversation as an organization, as a board, with the arts community directly to dive into that so much. But I think the application process is probably worthwhile to help sort that out. I do know that for a while, the arts were also tied into kind of all of the nonprofits. And then, there was more of a, kind of, public health kind of took a portion of that, and then, the arts went a different direction. And I believe in the last, the last go-around, it was kind of focused more on children's programs at the art colony. And so, I think it'd be really helpful to have that breakdown of how the dollars are being spent. If we're going to be issuing money, we should know how it's used. And so, I would, you know, if we approve this, I would follow up with a request for that. But as far as cutting them off, I think that would be quite disruptive. And I would, I think, I would be uncomfortable doing that. But I think I am comfortable having further discussions with them about how things are being used, what we should expect in the future, what's realistic, what, how much of that is on us, and how much of that is, like, what else are they doing? So, we could request for a presentation just about their strategic plan and their funding streams, and all that kind of thing would help, I think, give us good perspective. But that's probably not going to give you comfort right now. But again, I have very limited perspective. I don't know if, either Commissioner Starley, if you have more perspective there, or Auditor Powers, or Mr. Yorki, if you've had further conversations recently?
Well, I would say that in the past, it's always been they filled out a form to let us know where are they spending their money and what, why are they requesting the need of the money? Otherwise, we're just saying, okay, you know, they do have, you know, the arts festival event, but there is ways of advertising and getting that point across too for the art colony. So, and $10,000 is quite a bit.
Chairman Mills, may I?
Oh, yeah.
In the past, we've also funded North Shore Music Association, Grand Marais Playhouse, not anywhere near to this level of $10,000. And that's, I'm, it's my question about fairness. How do we decide they get $10,000 and the Playhouse gets, what, $3,000 or whatever they got in previous years?
Sure, yep.
And, yeah. So, I have a problem that we are just putting them at the top of the list and saying, you deserve it more than anybody else. I'm not comfortable with that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Chair, has the Budget Committee looked at any of this? No, okay.
Hasn't even come up there.
Yeah. Is it still going to be, other than this, going to be Public Health doing the nonprofits?
I'm sorry?
Well, the, because it went to a different department than nonprofits, will they still be looking at all of that too?
I believe the public health process will still be in place, but just that this is not a part of that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Because that's where the music association and all of those would be in that category?
I don't think so.
I don't believe so.
No, it's the arts.
The arts come to us.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I couldn't tell you which year, but I know that a split came in this a few years ago, where those that had any link, you know, to health, to public health, the board decided that they should be making their request to the Public Health Human Services, and that the others, arts, historical societies, et cetera, any of the other nonprofits would remain with the general fund. And we had a process for a while where we actually, we had traditional funding of a number of organizations. We would actually send them a letter and say, here's the process, with our calendar, just like we do with other departments, et cetera, where we sent it out to them and said, and here are the parameters, here's what we need from you. And that solicitation process, that ended two, I don't even remember, two or three years ago, where we just ended that and said, well, we're not, we're not going to solicit from the arts organizations. They can ask if they want, and that's the way it ended. So, we had a laborious process at one time. It was probably a little too onerous, based on probably much larger organizations. But we had simplified it a little bit in the interim. But I think if you're going to do it and try and be fair, you probably have to resurrect that to some degree, so that...
I believe...
If we're going to, if we're going to consider funding arts organizations.
I believe the year that the change was made where nonprofits went over to Public Health and Human Services was 2009, because I was reviewing documents with the Council on Aging, and that's when they began to go before that organization for their funding.
I don't know if it was that far back. I think it was like 2017. It's been pretty recent.
Okay, well, I saw...
Yeah.
I agree with, I can't get it to open.
Well, I think we should have a process in place for the arts, just as Commissioner Hawkins is advocating for. Again, the disruption, I think, if an organization, if a nonprofit organization would have without receiving kind of the precedented amount, is significant enough that I think that would be a greater harm. But I don't know where we need to, how we need to navigate this, what their timing is. Everyone's planning, you know, it's the budgeting time. And so, I don't know that we can instate a process for this upcoming year in a reasonable amount of time to then go through it. Or if it's just something, a hoop to jump through, if you've got the forms from the past that can be used. Commissioner Hawkins?
I'd just like to remind you, this is an increase from what has traditionally been given to the art colony. It hasn't always been $10,000. Actually, in 2017, it was $6,300. 2018, $5,500.
Yeah, just the last two years, isn't it?
Yeah, so, that's what I'm saying. And like I said before, there are other sources if they need support for an event or festival. There is another source of resources out there.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Uffey?
So, our budget calendar has this board approving the preliminary budget and levy on September 14th, which is three weeks from today. And so, I would like some direction on if the board wants to do some kind of evaluation of all arts requests prior to setting that, or maybe, maybe it doesn't have to, maybe there's a placeholder in that preliminary budget and levy. But I'd just like some direction on kind of what process he would like to undertake to consider all the arts-related requests that might be part of next year's budget.
Off the top of, what is, are those the three organizations that have been awarded in recent history, is the North Shore Music Association, the Playhouse, and the Art Colony? Do you know?
Yes. No one else has requested. We haven't solicited a request or put any information out. This is the only one that came forward on their own.
And so, what's the scope of those other two? The North Shore Music Association and the, and maybe this isn't fair conversation to be having when there's this request right now, but I think, to Commissioner Hawkins' point, to get that more...
I ran that report, and I included the other ones. I don't have it.
Yep.
You could go find it, but, did you keep that full report? It was on that full report.
Yeah. So, for the sake of budgeting for us, what I would expect, and what I think is reasonable, is to go with what was done last year, or the previous year, or from an application point in time, because of that evaluation, and have a placeholder there. And if we can get the historical on those two and resurrect that process, I think that's really important. But I do not, this is just me talking, clearly, I do not want to, as I said, disrupt the nonprofits that we've been supporting in the past. And I do, I do recognize that it hasn't always been to this level. But that, I think there is a vulnerability there to the organizations, especially in the last year, that I want to make sure we're sending a clear signal that we do support the arts community. But how we're doing that and how it's evaluated, I think, needs reflection. Commissioner Swenson?
Might I suggest a path forward, maybe, to table this issue, to ask for some detail as to how it's going to be spent and allow the board to have that perspective as we make the decision. And so, Mr. Chairman, I would move, make that motion to table this request at this time, pending the information from the organization to allow us to have a better understanding of how the money would be used.
Very good. There's a motion. Is there support?
Support.
Commissioner Hawkins has support. Any further discussion? Um, I would also, I don't think we need to amend it necessarily, but I am looking for that more thorough kind of spread of information with the other arts organizations as well, and, and at least for us to look at that application. I don't, I don't know that we can, you know, instate that for this round of things, but we need to-
For next year.
Yeah, yeah. So that would be-
There should be a sample of that form. I know I have it in one of my boxes, but maybe Minister Yorki could find one or-
I'll look for it.
And I think it also needs to be updated too.
Yeah, I found it online.
I have it.
Yeah.
What, do you have any, well, okay. Yeah, do you have any feedback on it right now? Or?
No, not right now.
Fair enough. Thank you.
That's fair.
And, and any other discussion? Hearing or saying none, uh, we have a motion to table this item till the 14th, I presume. Yep. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Yorki. On to the budget update, item 10D.
All right. And I had hoped today to provide updated versions of the spreadsheets that I've shared with you before. Um, we got information on Thursday that has changed our calculation of personnel costs in a very positive way.
Positive.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
I was bracing myself.
Careful not to fall out of your chair. And this was very, very unexpected, and, and of course, it's the result of your having hired the world's greatest county administrator. I wish I could take responsibility, but it's, it's not like that. So we had a meeting Thursday morning with the Northeast Service Cooperative, which is the organization through which we get our health insurance for, for staff. As you all well know, the trend over the last however many decades has been up, up, up. And so in our draft budget, we had put a 10% increase in insurance costs. With the change to, we're, well, there are a couple things. We're, we're going from Blue Cross Blue Shield to Medica as our provider. Um, in the, in the meeting that we had Thursday morning, folks from the Co-op shared data about, and folks from Medica shared data about our recent use of, of our insurance benefits. And for the most recent 12-month period, our, our utilization has actually gone down. And that worked in our favor in terms of the calculation for the coming year. So, and I should mention too, for, for staff who may be listening, if there's any angst about the fact that we're switching providers, the Service Co-op was very, very clear on the point that we expected the benefit package to be the same, to provide the same level of coverage that our current benefit package does. So, so the savings that we're going to experience next year is not the result of some big, you know, service reduction, cost-cutting measure. It's simply the fact that our subscription of, of that service has gone down, and that's led to a cost savings that, that we're going to enjoy moving forward. So the, the savings in, in our premium was forecasted to be about 4.3%. But then the Co-op is also pitching in another 5% out of fund balance. So basically, we're going to see a 9.3% decrease in our health insurance costs for next year. Um, I, I almost did fall out of my chair when, because they, they didn't talk about what the cost implications were. They did this long presentation, and I, the whole way through, I was steeling myself for the, you know, the bottom line and expected it to be painful. And when they told us it would be a significant decrease, I could not believe it. But that's, that's where we are. And so that, that does take a lot of pressure off the, the levy request for next year.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, and these are very preliminary numbers, and so do not take this as gospel. Brady estimated what the, what the levy would be for next year based on the decrease in our insurance cost, and it has come down, and this includes general fund, highway, PHHS, airport building, capital bonds, capital notes, and sales tax bonds. The, the total levy request for next year would be in the neighborhood of about 2.42%. And again, that's preliminary. We still have work to do to do some tweaking on, on these budgets that will present on the 14th, but that's where we are right now. So it does look very, very encouraging.
Say that one more time?
2.42%.
And that, that's with the highway and human services, we're proposing large fund balance uses, so that's still there. No change in that. So it's what they, we're presenting, but with this cut.
Yep.
It's a much better place to start.
Thank you. You said it and I wrote it on backwards.
Dave's still trying to put a 1 before that 2. You don't har, you don't even hardly know how to react, do you?
No, well, I, you know where my mind goes, is what, what factors led to this? And it's uh, the health of our employees. And so what an argument to promote the health of both employees, or for that matter, the health of our community. If we can make things healthier, things are cheaper. It's such an important point that I think we, we, we really need to drive home and lean on, and, and I'm just trying to think of other, what, what can we do, you know, to, to continue that? And hey, there's always unforeseen circumstances and emergencies and accidents and all of that, but it's just, boy, what a strong, what a strong point, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner Hawkins?
Yeah. I would hope it is because we're healthier.
Yeah.
I also think it's COVID-related. I know a lot of people who put off going to the doctor or elected surgeries did not happen, so I don't know that that's going to continue, and it's not because people are-
Yeah. But what can we do to, for that, you know? That's, that's where, yeah, I bet you're right, but it just, that's where, it demonstrates what could, you know, if it was because of healthier people, you know? So it's, yes. Thank you for bringing me back to reality.
Just gonna bring you back down to the bottom.
Well, just keep me grounded here.
I hate bringing it up, but just a few years ago, we had a 29% increase experience. So it wasn't that long ago.
Yeah. And, and that's-
It was up and down.
-unforeseen circumstances and, you know, but, but uh, yeah, there's only so much prevention you can do. And this, you know, we talk about this too, both at the Public Health and Human Services Board level, just, you know, if we can invest in community and get things healthier, then there'll be fewer out-of-home placements and all that kind of stuff. It's just, it's a theme that maybe is on, you know, repeat in my head here, so. Well, that's very exciting. I'm very excited to uh, see the preliminary on the 14th here too, so. Any other reactions from people or moving on in, in your report here?
I just-
Commissioner Hawkins, please.
Will you be sending us that updated spreadsheet then?
Yeah, I just, I just got it from Brady yesterday.
Yeah.
So it wasn't time to include it in the packet, but yes.
Okay, good, because it takes me a while to-
Yep.
Look it over.
You'll get it.
Thank you.
There, there was actually one other point I wanted to bring up in that Northeast Service Cooperative meeting, in, in that 3% of our employees, um, you know, we, we emphasized maintaining the same benefit level and the same benefits, but there will be 3% who have uh, I guess atypical medications or prescriptions that are going to be a little more challenging, but there are avenues to accommodate that. But it's, it's for, for 3% of our employees, there will be a hurdle to, to overcome. So I want to recognize that and them, and, and know that it's being looked into and, and addressed, and that there are resources to, to, to go after, after that challenge, but-
Yeah, and, and I would add too, I know from experience that, you know, insurance companies are constantly adjusting their coverage for pharmaceuticals. So, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say this is solely the result of our switching providers. I mean, you know, it could be that Medica didn't cover these medications before. I don't know if it's like a recent change, and I don't know if Blue Cross is also adjusting its coverage of those medications. So, you know, it's, it's not, we can't attribute it directly to that. It may be partly responsible for the change, but we don't, we don't know about.
Thank you. Okay. Well, that was item 10D under the budget update. Do you have further updates, Mr. Yorki, under 10E?
Always. You're not done with me yet. Um, okay, so just a couple of things I want to mention. Um, you know, the, the recent news about the wildfires and all the smoke is, is kind of overshadowing the developments we've seen in the last couple of weeks around COVID. Um, but I think you're probably aware, Grace Granogar, our Public Health Supervisor, was on the radio yesterday morning. Um, our, our county has seen 15 new cases in the last two weeks. Five of those were newly identified over this past weekend. Um, and so new information is still coming in, but I, I just wanted to, to say for the record that this is still an issue in our community, and that we still need to be taking all the precautions that we've been taking for the last 18-plus months to make sure that we protect ourselves, our families, and our friends and neighbors here in Cook County. Masking, washing your hands, socially distancing, and then also, to the extent that you can, avoiding large gatherings is very important. Um, and, and I will also say, since we are seated up here at this dais, we are required by statute to have in-person meetings, barring some kind of emergency order. We cannot have virtual meetings. We have to meet in person. Um, and so that's, that's why we're here, but I don't want that to suggest to anyone that in-person meetings are the preferred ways of doing things right now. If you can do any kind of gathering virtually, if you can avoid large gatherings, those are really good things that you can do, again, to help us prevent the spread of COVID-19 in the community. So I just wanted to point that out. I, the way things are going, I expect that we're going to see more cases popping up. Um, I think it may become necessary for, for this board to have further conversations about how we respond to that as a community. At this point, you know, we have reestablished a requirement that people mask in county buildings. Um, and so far, I've noticed some folks coming in without, without a mask on. I've given them a mask and just reminded them that we do have this requirement, and folks have been very accommodating. Um, so I'm, I'm really happy about that, but, but we really need to be vigilant and make sure that we're not doing anything that's going to give this virus more of a foothold in our community. So that's one thing. I also wanted to acknowledge, um, I actually had a chance to speak with an employee yesterday who expressed concern that the, apparently she had heard that the county was going to be implementing a vaccination requirement for employees. Um, that is not the case. We are, we've certainly talked about the possibility of a requirement, as are many organizations right now with the, with the flare-up in COVID that we're seeing all over the country. Um, but at this point, there is no plan to, to implement a requirement that people become vaccinated, that county staff get the shot. Um, you know, I think we, we have a pretty high vaccination rate in our community. I think most of our employees are vaccinated. For those who are not, it is very, very important that you all continue to mask in, in shared spaces. Um, but, but we don't have a requirement, and I don't foresee establishing one anytime in the foreseeable future. So I just, to the extent that there are staff watching this who are concerned about that, I just wanted to say that for the record as well. Um, the next thing I have on my list, and I feel like I'm taking up a lot of time on the agenda today, but we have gotten a request from, from LELS, which is the Law Enforcement Collective Bargaining Unit, uh, to, to meet with them to begin negotiations for the next three-year contract. And I did want to get the board's feedback today on who from this board would be joining me in having those negotiations with, with the CBUs.
Um, so uh, last year, we did just one-year negotiations with, with myself and Commissioner Starley was, was serving on that committee as well, or on that team, and um, I very much would like to continue that. I don't know if Commissioner Starley has, um, also shares that, or if, if you're willing to um, let, let another commissioner do that, or what your thoughts are there. I don't know if there's other interest from other commissioners or any of that, but I for one would like to all, continue on that team, and I, and I, I said as much to, to the other CBUs. I haven't, I don't know if they expect that of me, but that's, that's where I'm at. I don't know, Commissioner Starley, if you want to say anything. We talked a little bit about this earlier on, and so I was under the impression that Commissioner Swalson, we're going to be swapping out, but maybe that's not the case, and I don't want to, you know, step on toes.
Um, no. At this time, I would not be interested in continuing.
Okay.
It's a learning experience, and I'm glad that I worked together with you and the team, but I will not continue.
I certainly appreciated having, having, being on the same team as you there, because yeah, it was quite, quite a learning experience, and, and we worked off of each other well. So thank you for, for that. And is, and, and so with that, is that something that other commissioners are okay with? Or do you, was there other, do you have other interests? Commissioner Swalson, I think you were-
I would just say, I'm, I'm willing to do that. I have experience in it. I'm willing to do it if the other board members are all right with that.
Absolutely.
As, as you stated earlier, I knew there was a team that had been put together. There can be a lot of benefit to having that, you know, continuing, continuation as well. I certainly wasn't going to insert myself, but if others, you know, would like me to participate, I'm willing to do that.
Okay. Great. There we, there we go. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say, I mean, I know that as we've had conversations about this process, I've, I've become aware of Commissioner Swalson's experience in this area, and I'm really grateful that you're willing to serve in that role. Thank you. Um, the last thing I want to mention is we, we haven't talked for a while about the American Rescue Plan funding that we're getting, which is a reminder, is about a million and $60,000. Um, we did have stakeholder meetings in June to talk about developing a community plan for, for spending those dollars. And at the time, again, this was June, before the, before the virus started mutating and becoming more, more potent, we, we thought, you know, we'd, we'll probably spend a little bit on public health, kind of, you know, ongoing COVID response, maybe a little bit on broadband expansion, especially in service of low-income households. And then there was a lot of interest in using the funds for infrastructure to support housing development. Um, now that we are in a different place with, with the virus and when we have more spread going on in the community, I'm planning to set a meeting with, with our Public Health and Human Services staff, Sawtooth Mountain Clinic in the hospital, to revisit that conversation, because the context for it was very different in June than it, than it is now. And I want to make sure that we're using these dollars appropriately to, to make sure that our COVID response needs are, are met. Those needs appeared to be much lower in June. They seem to be potentially quite a bit higher now. And so we need to have that conversation, and that, that'll be the first step, and then reapproaching the other partners that we've spoken with about, about how we're going to spend these dollars. Um, the other thing I want to mention is I was recently on a meeting of county administrators through AMC, and it sounds like other counties are similarly taking a pretty measured approach to put together their budgets. They're not rushing into, you know, getting the dollars spent as soon as possible. The timeline for spending these dollars is much longer-
Correct.
-than we experienced under the CARES Act. So- So, um, that's, that's kind of where we are. Um, and I expect by our next meeting, I'll have a lot more information about how we're going to move forward.
How, was it 2026 we have to have it spent by? Was that the length of it or was it?
The, the dollars have to be obligated
2023?
By the end of '24 and expended by the end of '26.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Yorkey? And that's, that's the end of your, your administrator updates?
It is. Yes, sir.
Very good. Move this on down to our next, uh, item, uh, 11, Employee Concerns/ Commissioner Concerns. Commissioner Reports, Meeting Updates. Any, any reports from commissioners?
I would like to speak just briefly, Mr. Chair and to the rest of the commissioners and the public regarding a public safety issue that was brought to my attention. Um, and you may have seen an article in the Cook County News Herald last week about some very excessive speeding on the Gunflint Trail. Particularly on the mid-trail area, they've clocked people going past trail center at 80 miles per hour. There have been several residents that have nearly been hit when they've gone to their mailboxes. And there's a lot of concern. And so, um, the Highway Department, um, is working on looking at, uh, changes in signage and changing speed zones. Uh, they've had a couple of the portable speed zone signs that flash when you come and those are very, very effective. They also have placed, um, Deputy Sandstrom there at quite substantial, uh, length and giving out a lot of tickets in the area. It is not just tourists. I know we're quick to say it's always the tourists, but there have been a number, number of local, um, delivery trucks that have been involved in the speeding and, um, residents have actually called businesses to report that their trucks were going way too fast through that area, but it is a huge, uh, safety issue. And we've had, um, you know, a moose and some fox and other animals hit, but we don't want a person hit. We don't want any fatalities. So the Highway Department, the Sheriff's Department, along with the Gunflint Trail Scenic Byway Group and residents are going to be working to try to resolve this issue. But I just wanted to make everybody aware of it and let you know that it is a, a real serious issue. Part of the complication regarding resolving this, we talked about initially putting, uh, permanent signs that flash and tell you to slow down. But because the Gunflint is a scenic byway, there are restrictions about the kinds of signs you can have, the width of the shoulders, um, there's a number of things. So, um, it will definitely be a solution that will have to come from the collaboration of a lot of entities. But, uh, if you know people that are in that area, remind them to slow down. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. Any other, um, Commissioner Reports or Meeting Updates? I know we've shared a lot in, in the meeting already, so. Just anything else? Um, otherwise, moving on to item 11B, Meetings to Note. We have Rena Rogers Retirement Reception, um, August 31st at 3:00 PM. I believe there's also a gathering, uh, at Voyager Brewing.
That has been canceled.
Oh!
Due to COVID.
Oh.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to note, yeah, the, the, um, event on the 31st is going to be on the lawn.
Thank you.
Outdoors.
Yes.
So that we can socially distance.
Very good. Thank you. Good point. And thank you for the, the cancellation notice there. Otherwise, we have our Community Leadership Committee, October 14th at 5:30 with the Zoom link. Then Community Stakeholder Meetings with, uh, Senator Bach and Representative Eklund, Tafti Town Hall, October 29th at 3:00 PM. And then Grand Portage Lodge, uh, October 30th at, at 9:00 AM. And, uh, I don't know if you've received, uh, notice of the AMC, we, I guess we have talked a little bit about this, the AMC Policy, um, Conference. And I don't know how, how you all feel about that, um, as far as safety and, and COVID and just our time and prioritizing. And, and I guess we'll just each have to navigate that as, as best we see fit. I was just going to say, um, I see, there, there is incredible value in this conference because of, uh, the work that's done for policy for the state level and our involvement there is critical. I don't know to what extent we need to be there to do that. I know, Commissioner Sullivan, you're probably going to speak to this, but you use ways to do written submittals too. But having those conversations, kind of the back and forth and having those discussions and really talking through some things, there's a lot of value there. So, um, just for the new commissioners, I guess, if, you know, if, just depending on how things go, I don't know what the cancellation policy is, um, but it might be good to register and then cancel if things are just too hot. Or if, uh, if we want to wait and, and register to see if things cool down or what, how we want to do that. But I just wanted to note that I, I do see incredible value there, so. Way that as best we can. And Commissioner Sullivan, was there more?
I was just going to say, I'm putting together written comments. Um, I've been watching the, the, uh, COVID rates and, um, how high they are in that part of Minnesota and feel really reluctant to
Yeah.
Go to a large gathering. So
Yeah.
I'm going to be submitting written comments.
Yeah. And that's wise. That's, that's, that's prudent, I'd say. Otherwise, we have Correspondence and Memos, the Sales Tax Report, very impressive, also letter support for the 1% um, Lodging Tax, uh, then the Historical Society Board Packet. And, um, moving on to item 13, used to be 12, Recognition of Staff, Promotions of Rowan Watkins to the MIS Director. So congratulations, Rowan. We're very, very fortunate to have you, uh, on the team and now leading the team. And, um, uh, you've got excellent leadership skills and excellent experience and, and just, uh, very grateful for you stepping up there. So thank you. And if any commissioner has anything else, uh, speak up now. Otherwise, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
All right, I'll motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Swalson. Is, is there support? Commissioner Starley, thank you. All in favor? Aye. Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned. Have a wonderful day.
I thought I'd wait a little while this.
I don't know, it's kind of fun to see how long we all just sit here.
And everybody just watch Dave and see how long he's.
Oh, I can play that game.
Well, sooner or later, you'd go ahead and make the motion.
Well, that's true. That's true. Yeah.